That's about it, I think it's gonna be a little more solid.
Yeah, I look, that one, it's different looking, but it's quiet, it's, that's quiet.
A lot more beefed up, too.
Eric, you got them all signed?
Yep.
Need to?
No, I just wanna make sure before I start.
Alright, I've got five o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order today Monday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Roll call, we have Selectman Howdy Goodwin, Eric Eaton, Kevin Buck, myself, Jamie Thurlo, Town Manager Jesse Dunbar, and Town Clerk Sarah Abbott. McKenzie has called up sick for tonight's meeting.
I'll make a motion to excuse McKenzie from tonight's meeting.
Second.
They're moved and seconded to excuse McKenzie from tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, adoption of agenda, is there anything anyone would like to change on the agenda? Alright, approval of minutes, we have the minutes from September fifth.
I motion to approve the minutes from September fifth.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from September fifth, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next we have warrants. We have warrant number twenty-one for four thousand one hundred seventeen dollars and fifty cents, twenty-two for eleven thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars and thirty-five cents, twenty-three for two hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-seven cents, twenty-four for ten thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy-two cents, twenty-five for seven thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars and fifty-one cents.
I move to approve warrants twenty-one through twenty-five.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants twenty-one through twenty-five, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next we have many appointments, we have one seat of the Board of Appeals, and we had discussed this at our last meeting to check and see if Mike wanted to be, to stay as an alternate, 'cause I know, was it Patty Pinkham had applied as well for the position?
Yep, so he wanted to know if Patty was okay with being an alternate.
Yes.
As well. So, both are willing to do full, both are willing to do alternate. Mike is currently in the alternate seat. The alternate seat expires every year at town meetings, so expires twenty twenty-four, and the regular expires at town meeting twenty twenty-six.
I make a motion to appoint Mike Hayes to the regular seat on the Board of Appeals, expiring at town meeting in twenty twenty-six.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Mike Hayes to the regular seat on the Board of Appeals, expiring at town meeting in twenty twenty-six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I make a motion to appoint Patty Pinkham to the alternate seat on the Board of Appeals, expiring at town meeting in twenty twenty-four.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Patty Pinkham to the alternate seat on the Board of Appeals, expiring town meeting in twenty twenty-four. Is there any discussion?
Does anyone know Patty Pinkham?
Yeah.
She comes, she shows up once in a while.
Oh yeah, I just, I haven't met her.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next we have financial reports.
Alright, so your financial reports are as of August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, which is seventeen percent of the way through the fiscal year. Some highlights I'll go over tonight, in August we collected one million eight hundred six thousand sixty-six dollars in property taxes, total collections at thirty-five point five two percent of the budget, slightly behind last year's, but that is based for most of the recent years. They also collected forty-eight thousand forty dollars in Northern Vipal Excise Tax, resulting in total collections of nineteen point six seven percent of what was budgeted. Again, I get bit behind last year's, but it had to base for all other recent years. We received fifty-eight thousand five hundred nineteen in homestead reimbursements, six thousand four hundred twenty-seven from the Tremont Housing Authority for payment of taxes, three thousand one hundred sixty-seven from Southwest Harbor for the CEO reimbursement, one thousand one hundred sixty-four in registration agent fees, two thousand one hundred seventy-nine building permits, five hundred forty-six dollars in parking permits at the Reed Store Lot, twenty-seven hundred forty-eight from NMA dividends, three hundred dollars from parking tickets at the Reed Store Lot, and seven hundred seventy-nine dollars in checking interest. In the war fund, we received twenty-eight thousand eighty-five in use fees and a thousand dollars in garage rent. In the harbor fund, we received three hundred twenty-two dollars in boat excise tax, four hundred fifty-five dollars in transient float rental, and one thousand twenty dollars in mortgage payments. And in the sealboat fund, we received seven hundred and fifteen dollars in use fees. On the expense side of things, the administration cost center is running rate under budget at sixteen point four seven percent. You know, I guess we had an additional expense of five hundred and ten for postage, sixteen oh nine in earnings fees, fifty-seven hundred nineteen in software, fourteen hundred forty-seven in maintenance, and seven hundred and seventy-three in repairs and maintenance. And the public works cost center, we're under budget at nine point five three percent, which is expected this time of year. In August, some notable costs included twenty-five hundred and twenty for maintenance of Cape Road, twelve hundred ninety-one for new tires on the case, and a thousand ten in repair parts. You'll also see the payment for the county assessment, the amount of two hundred eighty-six thousand eight hundred thirty-nine. And on the general ledger, we received twelve thousand two hundred fourteen in revenue sharing in the state in August, bringing total receipts for FY twenty-four to twenty-eight thousand thirty dollars, or seventeen percent of what was budgeted for the year. And cemetery trust, you will see we received five hundred ninety-three dollars in interest in August, otherwise we're not seeing any changes to the general reserve accounts.
Okay, thank you, Jesse.
I make a motion to accept the July twenty twenty-three through August twenty twenty-three financial reports.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept the July twenty twenty-three through August twenty twenty-three financial reports. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next we have regular business. I didn't know if you were gonna make a date by Saturday. We got versant power easement. And we already, we already accepted the check for that, right? So I don't see, I don't see any need to do anymore for this, do we? I think, well, is the town taking it in, or Jesse, did you make it up, Jesse?
Yes, no, it was deposited.
Yeah.
So, as it states in your file, there's two parts to this. The first part of the agenda item is the easement that you signed that Joe asked me. I completely realized that it was missing the notary public portion, the deed that he signed for acceptance at the registry, and they also made a correction, it was missing one of the law numbers. And I believe they did a paragraph that was repeated twice. So that's the same document we signed with those updates. And then additionally, there's a second easement which Dave can elaborate on, essentially for an anchor, for a pole to stop the parking lot here, and an over, overhanging wire where they had to situate a spot they wanted, the pole they couldn't get, so they have to come from a different direction. And the wire overhangs the ice skating rink going to be just the pole.
Alright, is there, you didn't have any luck with Mike Wagner's down there?
Nope.
That is, that's, we redesigned for that.
Okay.
But this one is at, across the ice skate rink.
Yep.
Come outside the driveway, there's a hole close to the road, and instead of going directly across the road, they're going down to Hanson's Park.
Oh yeah, okay.
Which creates a very small overhang.
Yep. Yeah, I don't see any issue with that at all.
No.
Overhang.
Almost can squeeze boats out there, Eric?
Yeah, that's right.
I motion to approve and sign the easement between the inhabitants of Town of Tremont and Versant Power for an easement on a portion of lot number thirty-three, portion of lot number thirty-five, and all of lot number thirty-nine shown on tax map number fourteen of the Town of Tremont.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve and sign the easement between the inhabitants of the Town of Tremont and Versant Power for an easement on a portion of lot number thirty-three, portion of lot number thirty-five, and all of lot number thirty-nine shown on tax map fourteen from the Town of Tremont. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I motion to approve and sign the easement between the inhabitants of Town of Tremont and Versant Power for an easement for pole anchors on lot number thirty-three and overhanging wires on lot number thirty-five shown on tax map number fourteen of Town of Tremont.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve and sign the easement between the inhabitants of Town of Tremont and Versant Power for an easement for pole anchors on lot number thirty-three and overhanging wires on lot number thirty-five shown on tax map fourteen to the Town of Tremont. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? What we do about McKenzie's, she can?
I can follow, yeah. You have McKenzie's not here, so.
Harvey?
McKenzie's not here.
Harvey, you don't either, do you?
It doesn't, please, I mean.
Do you want, next to the witness, do you want, like, Sarah to witnesses?
I'll witness him.
Oh, okay.
She did.
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
I'll just give it some time, you know.
They're right there on the top.
We should be starting the groundwork, doing some stuff.
Really good.
Kevin, you signed it, it's blocked.
What's that?
You signed it?
Yeah.
Did I? Oh, sorry about that.
Flucked out on this last storm down here, I know.
I'm gonna see if you're paying attention.
I saw a couple trucks, like, riding around finding stuff that was down, but not, like, backed up usually. They started one end of the southwest and worked their way right across, but it was, we were fortunate, the wind stayed out of the north.
I just saw them riding around, so you can talk to them guys.
Yeah.
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 We're still a pretty big one down southwest.
Really?
Yeah, blocking part of Main Street.
Oh, yes, I saw that, yeah.
And then the traffic that stopped on the other way when you could get through it, is it working on the southwest?
Yeah.
Did you lose, lose power here at all?
I didn't lose it, not once.
No, not down here.
Right here, and this side of town, Bass Harbor, but we did on the boatyard over on, you know, the other side of the harbor, but just for a short time, hours. You didn't lose it at all over there? No. Did for just a short time. I was like, wow, that's pretty good.
Spectrum was down for a day.
Yeah.
You guys look good.
Yeah, no, I know. It was, it was. Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
At first they thought it, it, it's correct.
Yeah, yeah, and then they, if we did, that it was gonna be east, we went, which east down here will be, that would just make a mess out of everything.
Other companies anticipated it pretty real bad.
Yeah.
And some went back.
Yeah, I'd rather, better off to be prepared and, and then just have to send everybody home than not be prepared.
Well, he said the biggest gust they saw on the state was fifty-nine miles an hour.
Because that's the worst stage of a response.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, employees.
Yeah.
You know, people at town lots and everything else.
Yeah. Good, Jesse?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, next we will go on to the public safety building grant. Let you start with that, Jesse, and then if there's some people here to speak, I'll be after that.
Yes, so, I'll start off. The Climate to Thrive, working on multiple things for us, was brought to their attention as a grant available from the US Department of Energy for investments in rural or remote areas. At the same time, we're throughout the process of working Tremont, they had a lot of feedback from listening sessions, from residents concerned about blackouts and power outages and where to go, or if it's out for multiple days, what to do. The December storm last year really, you know, upset, worried people on it being a continuing trend of what to do if they were without power for multiple days again. And on top of that, the discussion of the potential new public safety building maybe being developed here on the site next door. So this grant from the US Department of Energy, there was a pre-app, the process opened in July, and we submitted a brief pre-application.
For it?
To see if we would be qualified to apply to the full grant. It's a no-match required from the town for the project. So there was six hundred applicants?
Six hundred, yeah.
And so they chose, less than ten percent were invited to apply for the full application, or one of the applicants chose to make the full application. I'll let Beth explain more, Cory, break, break. But essentially, it would be to equip the potential public safety building as a resilience hub, if you want to call it that, for power outages to be equipped with a microgrid-type system, battery backup, to supply power to that building for up to five days if there was an outage with a personal person. I'll stop there.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'm, I'm great for those of you that don't know me, Jesse really hit most of the key points, but at the, in many of the many conversations that we've been having, concerns about power outages, where they get caught up over and over again, especially concerns about those folks who might not have the resources that they need to keep themselves warm and safe, when we do have these outages that last a long time. And we remain aware of this big federal funding opportunity that's specifically for towns of ten thousand or fewer residents, intended to fully fund no-match from the towns between either five, between five hundred thousand and five million dollars for the investment in energy improvements that fills some kind of unmet need. So we had a sense that Tremont would be a really great fit for this opportunity, and we had also been aware of those discussions about that potential new public safety facility and saw a really great opportunity to, you know, make that space which were already housed our first responders, also a place where people could go to get themselves warm, serve as a warming center, places to get water, places to use their medical devices that might depend on electricity, connect with other folks, get the services that they need. Yeah, and we submitted that pre-application and got approval to move forward for that. And I'll, I'll let Beth talk a little bit about the process so far.
Yeah, again, I think Jesse and Bree really hit all the key points. I think the thing I wanna highlight is it's between five hundred thousand and five million dollars of essentially no-match funding, so nothing is required at the town to receive that money. You don't have to put anything forward. And so, yeah, we collaborated with Jesse and submitted the pre-application in July for this warming center, it was a link to that could power the building, these additional electrical upgrades that could power the building for up to, or for a minimum of five days. And who knows how long it's beyond that. So, we decided to submit this application, and like Bree said, we were among, or Jesse said, we were among less than ten percent that were invited to make the full application. So we wanted to come to Bree today and seek approval to move forward with that application. We would be donating our time to help write that application in collaboration with the Town of Tremont. And we also have San Diego National Labs that would assist with the technical, would be giving us eight hours of technical assistance to improve our application through the Department of Energy. We're here to answer questions, any questions that you may have, and.
Okay, thank you.
So, let's just say, I'm gonna sound like the biggest ass in the room, which usually nobody's ever collaborated with a fire department or emergency manager director at this point.
Yeah.
So, so two key things are that fire departments in schools should not be used as shelters. So, yeah, if you were gonna continue with this, I'd suggest you make it this building instead of a public safety building. So, yeah, like, I'm, so I didn't know anything about it till I just read it two months ago. So, but I've been the emergency manager director for the Town of Tremont for thirty-three years, and I'm pretty old at age myself, but we've never had to open shelters since I actually purchased five thousand dollars worth of fancy cots and they've never been on track. But I do understand where you're coming at, and people seem to be becoming less independent and more needy. I think there's one way to say it, but I would strongly discourage having a shelter or any type of sheltering facility at a fire department or emergency facility or school, because once the emergency's over, it's then a pity on the fire department's ability to function or the school's ability to function, but I think this would be more suitable application. And I, like I said, I apologize.
I'm curious, Keith, why it wouldn't be good? I mean, it seems to me like that's where you'd want it.
No, I, I mean, I, no, it wouldn't be where I'd want it, the last place I'd want it.
No, but I, I, why?
Well, because of trucks, labor, moving in and out, contaminations, lockout, tagout of people having access to parts of the fire station that they shouldn't be, kids playing around. I, I can't name one fire department emergency facility in the state of Maine that has the ability to use it as a shelter.
Yeah, I was kind of picturing it as like a second floor over it, not actually in it.
It should be completely independent or separate from the building. I, I guess you could ask the emergency manager director for the town, city, who would be, Amber Sankey. No, I just, like I said, I, I think it's a great idea. I mean, I'm not a fan of solar or anything else like that, but it's not anything, it's more that the only way to engineer the dangers and hazards out of people being in that type of facility is not elected in there at all. So, like I said, this building has been a warming shelter, and we've only had people come in here and use it to plug in phones and do a few things, but I don't know what it would cost to update this to have showers, bathrooms, kitchens, but... No, I see what you're saying, Kevin, but it's always been the first rule of thumb that once you make an emergency facility a shelter, it's no longer an emergency shelter, you're basically doing shelter, not tending to any emergencies. I know, it didn't sound right, it does.
Well, I was actually in a meeting today, and they said don't use the word shelter. This is, you know, it's a warming center, but anyway.
I talked a few days ago.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, anyhow, like I said, I, I am willing to share. My educational background is occupational safety, and that again was what they sent down the road many times. But maybe you guys know differently, I know the funds are available, but we haven't even created a committee to start designing the public works facility building yet, but I'll let them know if they would be, now that we just gave all the easements away to Bangor Hydro for a cent, and I don't really see the state needing a fit where we originally think it would. But, so, and so I guess the next thing leading into this is if they want to continue with this, then we should create a public safety committee with fire department, town officials combined, and see, you know, reach out to them, anything, and start creating or setting up a, some type of committee to get... Because I think our goal originally was thirty-third, not twenty-third.
Jesse, I know I've asked you a bunch of times, but did you ever ask our other grant people if there was anything in there for a public safety, or?
We've discussed it, and there's nothing they've come up with yet. I haven't gone through that whole list yet. But they didn't say there was grants through the state for, like, battery storage, but nothing related directly to public safety.
Now, would this, would there be a way to, I'm just thinking, if you did a separate building, you know, near where we have thought about a fire department going, would there be any funding available for the building itself, or is this, is it just for equipment?
This is, I have pretty strictly the electrical and structural upgrades, so it would cover, like, any of, any of the upgrades that the utility needs to do in this area, which would be very kind of full of the town.
Yep.
And the technologies that we could add on to a building.
Okay.
Weatherizing it or anything like that? Weatherizing it, making it?
Efficiency.
Efficiency upgrades, yeah, so, to a certain extent, but it has to, it has to be part of, like, the energy system itself. And the timeline for this project is, is up to five years, and so, creating, maybe like you discussed, having all those points can be written into this grant to, to kind of meet the, the needs of the town. This is for the town, so we would wanna be working in close collaboration with the town on this. And like I said, we just did a quick pre-application to find out if we would qualify, so.
And I think it was mentioned that the applications aren't due for thirteen months?
No, they're due October twenty-sixth.
I thought you said, I thought you said twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
I thought that was, oh, okay. That's, that's, that's different, I thought you said next year. I misunderstood you earlier.
Related to that, I did, just speaking to Beth earlier, where we don't have firm plans yet for any building, I had asked Beth, you know, how much flexibility is there with the grant in moving the location or whatever? She seemed to think it's fairly flexible, especially if we know that right now, and you put that into grant, that it may move to this spot, then that's, but maybe not, recognizing that we don't have, you know, solid plans for that as well.
I know, I think it's, it's a great thing, I'm just trying to think of how, I mean, if it's the public safety building, if there's no, and no grant funding, you know, if you can't find any available grants right now, then we're gonna be a long while before we're even there. So, I'm just afraid it's gonna be beyond that time, you know, just in the, the realistic. I mean, everything takes so long, and I'm just trying to think of any other spot that it might fit.
Right.
You know, where it might be useful.
I mean, like Keith suggested, you know, I don't know, I have to ask, have a discussion with Beth and Cory and Bree, but I don't know if it's something that would be worth, you know, doing here. I mean, I don't know how much space this needs.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
But as far as, I mean, the components are largely, they are, so.
Mostly, yeah.
Yeah, so they're not in this building.
Any space would be
Right.
good, so I think this is the best place, because it's really non-essential in an emergency. And I agree with Keith, they, those two things don't go together, just because there's too much, the first responders need to do their thing, and they don't need... They don't need any other interruptions.
Yep.
So I think this place, this building would be probably the best fit for what we have for buildings now and the timeline. And just see, let's retrofit this place to, to do what we need. Like Keith said, you know, we've had a lot of cuts and stuff and in the past, we haven't had a huge call for it. Not saying that there won't be. Certainly I agree that there will be at some point in time. But how many people do you need to house, you know, we don't know that. And there's a lot of, a lot of people in this community that will also take people into if needed. So, you know, we don't have to house everybody in the community. I like the idea of doing something with this building, but what do you guys think?
Yeah, the biggest thing that concerns me is the size. I mean, it's pretty limited space, but we, like you say, I think a lot of people are gonna be with neighbors or whatever. And I mean, it won't be the whole town population, certainly.
And you can fit a lot of people in here, upstairs, downstairs, throw them in the garage.
I mean, maybe without that last one.
Yeah, just cycle them through so they stay warm.
I think, obviously my gut says the best spot's the gym. I mean, that's a community building, but I know it's attached to the school and I know, I'm well aware of all that. But it's, that's, the construction as well, the construction makes it more stormproof and, and it's a big area. It would be, I mean, that's where it should be, I think, that that's like your, that's the first thing you think of. But I know with the school, it's been a big gray area, especially in the last couple of years, so.
It's close to the water level too, though.
Yeah.
That's the other downside, yeah.
Yes.
So Reece brought up just a really good idea just here. And yeah, well, I think the other thing to think about is that the fact that the planned facility, at least at its current location, is also so close physically to where we are right now. So if we were to build a system and equip this space to, you know, be as that space that retains power, that power that we retain during outages could also power that facility while still having it be a separate space that would accomplish that.
Yeah.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yes. We're early in the process. It definitely adjusted that we've adjusted, yeah. So this was the primary.
Yeah, let's do, let's build one then, I think that's a, that's a good point.
I think it's a lot easier to navigate than the gym as well. I mean, gyms obviously better space overall, place larger.
Yeah, I, I would prefer here to the school too, I think, for a couple of reasons to talk about. I agree with you, I think the space is a little better.
Yeah, and being able to tie into a public where I think there's, you know, you have the public works here, we have the town office here, we have the fire department, the safety building here as well. And then kind of it's, it's where the center is anyway for the town, so.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing, you could expand this building if it became necessary.
Yeah.
That wouldn't be the harder reach.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. I will, see, I've never even thought about it before.
Yeah, I hadn't either. I make a motion to authorize the town manager to apply for the US Department of Energy's Energy Improvements in Rural or Remote Areas Grant for potential public safety building.
Or do you want it to say that Jesse or?
Town office.
Town office.
Town office.
Town office.
For the town office.
For, yeah, for the town office.
Second, I'm moved in second to authorize the town manager to apply for the US Department of Energy's Energy Improvement in Rural or Remote Areas Grant for the town office. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
Yes, thank you. Hopefully you don't have to come back in another couple of weeks, Dave.
Hopefully.
Yeah. Next time, bring your checkbook again. Yeah.
Get away with it once, right?
Yeah, that's right, I'll let you get away with it once, but next time you're paying. Next we have the senior tax rebate program. And, yeah, I'll let you, you can explain it. I can give you my two cents from it. So the, the property tax stabilization, stabilization for seniors program that was out, what, last year in the state of Maine, ran out of funding?
They repealed it.
Oh, they repealed, sorry, okay. And some people have, towns have started their own and I'll let you go from there Jesse.
So LD 290 was the law that the state legislature passed for the tax stabilization for seniors. It was enacted in August of 22. It was repealed on July 6th of 23. The application period was open last year until December. If you were over the age of 65 and held a homestead exemption, you could apply to have your taxes frozen at the prior tax year's rate. So they went into effect on these tax bills that were just mailed out in July. Tremont had 101 applicants that were frozen. Some of the, I guess, issues you could say with the bill was that there was no income consideration at all in the state. So if you make any amount of money and get your taxes frozen. The intent behind it was for seniors who couldn't afford to stay in their home, to stay in their home. But that's not what was enacted. One of the other issues that led to its repeal was it was missing a lot of the language that's typically in a state bill. Nobody knows why other than it was passed through quickly, a little everybody reading it. So it didn't require the normal constitutional things that bills have in them. It didn't require the state to reimburse the towns 100%. It says they will, but it doesn't require them to. So for a multitude of reasons, the state ended up repealing it. They have increased some other of their existing programs, most of which are through filing income taxes to expand seniors rebates that way. One issue we've heard is that there's a fair amount of seniors who don't file income taxes or if they do, it's minimal anyways, so there's not really a, you know, big generation of a rebate from it. So some towns, one of which I've been remembered from a training, which is Cumberland, have established a local senior tax rebate program. In your packet is the town of Cumberland's program. Some differences, A, if you want to explore doing a Tremont-only program, it's up to the town to set those standards. So for example, Cumberland's is over the age of 70, the state's is over the age of 65. You can do whatever, you feel is the best amount. The towns does require income level, people level of 91,000 combined income. Again, that's their choice, you can choose whatever amount you want. Obviously, the big difference between this and the states is that it is not reimbursed by the state. It's become part of the general fund expense for the town. Looking at the town of Cumberland's memo for FY 23, they returned the rebate checks 80,926 to 211 residents. As you can see, we had 101 qualify under the state's program. I anticipate it would be less than 101, should you implement income requirements and if you opt the age or not. They also require that they've lived in the town of Cumberland for 10 years. The state's program just required that you have a homestead for the prior 10 years in the state of Maine. So it was another 10 years in Tremont situation for the state. Just doing quick math, just so you have the numbers. If you added $80,000 to our budget as an expense, that would raise the taxes across the town by about $40,000, based on the formula we use for the budget. So you'd be looking at everybody's going up approximately 40 to rebate senior over the age of 70, up to $750,000. Again, the formula, the application and the worksheet that Cumberland has developed is something you can, town of Tremont can develop and change the amounts if you want to change the amounts. It is an ordinance, so I'll confirm if you want to look into it, confirm then may, but in our case of belief, it goes to town meetings to adopt such programs. In Cumberland's case, it was a town council, it was a town council. So just something, we have had plenty of residents who have come in happy with their frozen bill and wanting the application to do it again. And we have to inform them that the state has repealed it. Most have been upset, some obviously not happy, angry. Some of them vividly crying when they realize that it's online. So just put it on your agenda for consideration if it's something you want to go into or.
Yeah, I can't believe the state didn't put some sort of an income thing on there. I mean, even if it was higher than that, I just can't believe that they would set. So if you're a millionaire, a kid, to me, this program is for senior citizens who cannot afford to, you know, low income or.
You don't get a price over the house.
Yep. I think it's, yeah, it's a little disappointing, that's how that went, but. Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea. I think, I like what Cumberland has done, obviously tweak it some, but it's really, I mean, this is the cut, for the city of Cumberland versus us, I don't think it's gonna cost the town much at all. And I think it, you know, if it helps out people between the difference of them not being able to live here and especially if a lot of people I've seen have lived here their whole lives and then now they can't afford to even pay their taxes, it's a shame, it's too bad.
Well, you know, the other nice thing, it is a graduated amount and people making the least money are gonna get the most back and those are probably the ones that getting hit the worst.
Yep.
And it should affect them better, I think it's a good idea too, I like the way they set that up.
Yeah.
I mean, again, you know, maybe you want to change the numbers a little. It makes a lot of sense.
I know, the, I'm a little out of loop on that. As far as the income, 90,000 seems a little high, but maybe combined, you know, if it's. But if you lowered that, I like that you have to be a resident. I like the seven years old, I think that's the perfect age for it. And being a resident of the town for 10 years, I think that's great as well. I think it's, that's the target group that, you know, I feel like that.
Yeah, those are the people, the 10 years, the people you're gonna worry about losing their house.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with it. I like what you guys said.
I think it's okay, how do you?
Yeah.
I think if we, you know, you can do whatever with the money and figure out what that amount is, but target the right, you know, obviously the people who need it.
Well, I mean, even with the numbers, if you're over 60,000, you're only getting 50 bucks.
Yeah, no, right.
So. It doesn't go too far on my taxes.
Yeah, no. Well, I think I would rather give more to a lower income bracket than even what they did in that, you know, maybe less. Drop the number down to 75,000 and increase your benefits for people who are on the low end of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you're okay with me looking into it, then the next step would be offering back, you know, drafts of the ordinance.
It would be kind of interesting to see what, I don't know how you'd separate it out, but it'd be kind of interesting to see what people that are struggling are paying in taxes, you know, what number would make a difference, you know? I know there's people that are making a lot less than 60,000 a town.
Yep. I know, I can think of a few people maybe look up on the tax record just to see what their properties are, just to see. Yeah. But yeah, I think it's a good idea Jesse.
Keith, just go stand up.
Oh, sorry Keith.
Maybe I just have one question related to, do you know when the town's ready to do a complete reassessment of all the properties or is just?
It'll be reflected on next year's tax, next spring now.
Okay, I don't, I don't want to throw any one neighbor like Jake out. I'm under the boss, but I, I physically can go through the tax man and look at properties that are not correct. Someone, I mean, when they're round, give the numbers, all that seems, nobody took the time to do it. They just put a number in there and make something happen.
Yep.
I have a letter set up, property values at $2,700, paper said 107,000. Somebody needs to go through and recalculate. I think that would really bring the town to realization that it would help some people that.
Yep.
People pay their fair share.
Yep.
Yeah, so they're beginning to that rebuild process and through tests. So in the spring, they'll send out the letters.
Was it 100% or just 25%?
No, it's 100%.
Oh, I think it was easy.
Yeah, so probably will, the town will make four, fold the income that we're talking of, you know.
Yeah, I think that would offset a little bit of money.
Yes, no.
Right now.
Yes, it's definitely, there's plenty of it.
And was that $40 per household increase in taxes per every 100,000 or?
250.
250, kind of, yeah.
And that's on 80 some thousand, which I think we're gonna be a long shot from that. So it's nothing either way, yeah, it's.
Yeah, yeah, it's longer.
Yep.
Do you need a motion on this or anything?
Make a motion, request the town manager to look into establishing, establishing a senior tax rebate program for the town of Tremont.
Second. I'm moved in second to request that the town manager look into establishing a senior tax rebate program for the town of Tremont. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have facilities use application for the Acadia Council of Realtors.
Yes, so the Acadia Council of Realtors is looking to do a 5K to raise money for affordable housing. They did one in 2018, 2019, spring in Harvort. I was on the council at the time, the publisher, organized the two events. In 2020, they were hoping to do one in conjunction of Oktoberfest. And then COVID gets, they haven't been doing it. They'd like to do one this year, this year Oktoberfest is over here, I forget what it was last year. So they would like to do the start and finish line here at this facility and use the bathrooms down, bathroom down here and power for the speaker. For the morning of October 7th, I did speak with the chamber about it to discuss if they had any concerns about it happening the same day as Oktoberfest. And they were in agreement that because the intent is to run the race down Harbor Drive back, much like the, what was the name of the one they used to do? Church of Trump? What they did from the school?
Yeah.
Anyways, they would remain off Tremont Road if people are coming and going to set up for Oktoberfest. So they didn't have, seem comfortable with it.
I'm gonna have to get in shape.
Howdy, we're right behind you.
Yeah.
Quite a ways behind.
Yeah.
Like all of us.
Jesse, could you have to reach out to the fire DMS and just let us know what the rally is and what they're talking about?
Yes, I need to talk to you about that now just for some assistance.
Yes, I need to talk to you about that now, just for some assistance.
I don't have an downtown, but, yeah, we'd love to help. Bill Weir loves this sort of thing, but if they could just give us a few dough and we'll provide some metro help.
Yeah.
Uh, make a motion to approve the facilities use application for the Acadia Council of Realtors to use the Town Office Lot and Harvey Kelly Meeting Room on October seventh for their five K event.
Second. Then moved and seconded to approve the facilities use application for the Acadia Council of Realtors to use the Town Office Lot and Harvey Kelly Meeting Room on October seventh for their five K event. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have general assistance ordinances. This is just our.
This is your yearly.
Usual.
Adoption of appendices, um, for October first, twenty-three through September thirtieth.
I make a motion to adopt and sign the October first, twenty twenty-three through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four appendices A through H of the General Assistance Ordinance pending a public hearing.
Then moved and seconded to adopt and sign the October first, twenty twenty-three through, uh, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four appendices A through H of the General Assistance Ordinance pending a public hearing. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Right, next we have cemetery lot sales. We have lots three and four in Rich Cemetery for a Wesley Siden.
I make a motion to authorize the Town Manager to sell lots three and four in the Rich, Rich Cemetery to Wesley Siden.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the Town Manager to sell lots three and four in the Rich Cemetery to Wesley Siden. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, next we have Town Manager's report.
All right, in the last two weeks, um, I did a couple of check-ins with, um, Justin Seavey, who's been filling in as Harbor Master at the moment. I had a meeting with, um, the Land Drive regarding the energy grant we just discussed. Did some comp plan preparations for the public hearings for the comp plan this Thursday. Did some road research, um, on some possible roads that are gonna come before you on the agenda future. Did dig save for the new radar sign on Harbor Drive. Conducted interviews for the Deputy CEO, um, meeting preparations, financial reports. I had a meeting with D E P regarding, uh, the landfill, just to check in the state meeting. Um, and storm preparations with Justin, Public Works, and the Fire Chief regarding the storms. Uh, office staff, um, the clerk, uh, the taxes were recommitted to Sarah by the assessor. She filed the BMD reports and attended a, um, tax webinar. Public Works finished a repair on the John Deere, installed posts, um, at the school for the flashing signs. Washout repair on Cape Road, Truck Nine went to White Ford for some repairs. Loaded Town Office Trail, put tables back, um, and Fire Department from the library book sale. Trimmed around Hillrest Cemetery, uh, moved the ice rink shed building over here by Public Works. Moved the rest of the cemeteries, uh, got the post ready for the radar sign. Did it repaired to a couple of driveways on Bernard Road that had washed out and storm preparations and response to the storm on Saturday. Uh, Harbor Master repaired the door to the Harbor Master Shack, um, worked on going over the morning list. Worf bills, um, paperwork and office cleanup. Repaired the hydraulic hoist, replaced a line on the electric hoist, followed up on wharf permits, picked up hydraulic fluid and tucked off the tank and, um, had some discussions with some broken down vessels. Over the next few weeks, I will be, um, attending the public hearing for the comp plan and conducting Harbor Master interviews.
Thank you, Jesse. Suggestions for the next meeting? Date of the next meeting?
I motion to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, October, October second, two thousand twenty-three at five o'clock at the Town Office.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, October second, at five P M. at the Town Office. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have an executive session, uh, titled Employment Matters.
I make a motion to find that public discussion of these personnel matters could be reasonably expected to cause damage to employees' reputation and/or violate the employees' privacy rights and therefore to go into executive session to discuss the employment appointment and assignment, duties, promotion, demotion, compensation evaluation, disciplining, resignation and/or dismissal of an individual, a group of public officials, appointees or employees as permitted by R M R S A four oh five dot six dot A.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session entitled Employment Matters, as read by Kevin. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you, Sarah.
All right, we are out of executive session at six twenty-nine. Motion adjourned?
Second.
All those in favor?